Okay, welcome to the Village of Wappingers Falls. Meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Trustees for today, November 18th, 2020. I'm gonna ask the Clerk to take over from here because I need to be camp straight.
All right, Board, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, Mayor Alexander.
Here.
Trustee Marco John.
Here.
Trustee Catalano.
Here.
Trustee Nesnick.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Present.
Trustee Panessa.
Here.
Trustee Lamars.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Here.
Next on the agenda is a discussion from KC Engineering.
Well, before we get into that, John, I just have to do the public service announcement about this Zoom meeting. Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's March 13, 2020, Executive Order 202.1 as extended, which suspends certain provisions of the Open Meetings Law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channel or YouTube. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the Town, to the Village website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the members, and there's a quorum present for this meeting. I have also confirmed with the Village Clerk that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the Village's webpage and on the Village's bulletin board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media as well. Okay.
All right, Board, if you have the latest agenda, you'll see KC Engineering's projects discussion. If you don't have it, I can get it to you. So, John.
Would you like me to share my screen?
Well, probably would be nice for people to see. Yeah, you can do it.
Okay, that didn't work. Hey, can you see the screen now? Anybody?
Yep. Yeah, good.
Okay, so we have the boathouse under construction. Woodland Manor was awarded the contract. They have been at it and are working quite diligently. They're planning or hoping to be paving by the first week of December. Do you remember that was for the patio, the parking area, sidewalks, the lighting? We did do the alternate add lighting to add the lightings that were similar to the other lights in the project. Franny Reese is moving right along, has actually downed to punchless items and work relating to the stairs and the handrail, pretty much substantially complete at this point. The tap project also with contact construction is nearly complete, also down to punchless items. We're gonna continue monitoring that. That's also, remember, that's where the wall collapsed. So, there is a section of sidewalk that won't be completed this year. Contract five has been submitted. Contract five is the water interconnect with the town of Wappingers in the village down Losi Road. We've also, at the Board's request, have added the sewer work in front of Duchess Plaza and Arrow Auto Glass to the Contract Five set of drawings that will be out to bid. That's part of the proposal that Nancy presented to the Board earlier this week, and we will get into that in a minute. Again, this is, this project is intended to go out to bid in the spring. It solves a lot of problems as far as duplication or backup wells, and the Health Department is very very happy with this project, by the way. Again, Nancy had submitted a proposal to there for the minimal work associated with putting the Contract Five, I mean, the Contract Four sewer work into the drawings, and then it will be also the inspection work that would have been done under Contract Four for the section of the sewer work, again, in front of Duchess Plaza and Arrow Auto Glass on Route Nine. We would need... Okay, and the last thing on the item for that is, it is time to schedule the public hearing for Contract Five. The Board would do that. That would be great. The water filter plant, the USD application, has been submitted. We're just waiting to hear if they have any questions or comments. Bain Park, the master plan that the committee met back on October 20th, and remotely, and then there was a kickoff design meeting for November 6th. Again, we're working on this. This is where the concept master plan for the park, the site design of the playground equipment, and of course, the EAF form that's required. The grease trap, the committee met on the August 28th. It's a two-year grant. We're working on it. That should be submitted in the next coming weeks. The EPA for the brownfield assessments, we're just finalizing a few things with the EPA, and we should be able to get out to the bleachery and do the Phase Two environmental assessments associated with that brand. And that site, the sewer and water infrastructure study has been submitted. We have heard nothing more. I guess at this point, we probably should just remove this from the list. And then Poggi Terrace, again, nothing more has been done on it, and we're just waiting to hear from the Village if you need anything else. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Going back to, it's John Card, going back to Contract Five design, it's time to schedule a presentation, public meeting. Who's gonna do that? Corey, are you there?
Yeah, Corey, this is Matt. Corey should be the one to work with John Zarewski to schedule that. And I think we're gonna try to do it in a Zoom meeting in December.
Yes, I concur.
Okay. Just wanna follow up on that.
Okay, I'll check in with Corey tomorrow and see what dates will work.
Yeah, so if that doesn't work because of, you know, all the different things that are going on, we'll push it off to January, but I think if we're gonna be more and more shut down, it might be good to use that time.
Are we looking at a hard deadline for that, for the public meeting? There's no hard deadlines?
Not yet, not yet. Before we go to construction, there will be, but we're not at that point yet. So, right now, it's in front of EFC, the State Health Department, the Duchess County Health Department in the county for comments, reviewing comments.
So, I have, John Zarewski, I have a question from, this is Matt Alexander. On the Franny Reese project, I believe you said that the only thing left was the handrail? Is that the only other?
There's a few punchless items, the handrail, and I think the stairs need to be reworked.
I thought, I think the stairs, so I think they've been reworked. Maybe they just need to be inspected. George, if they need a third?
Yes, so they're done.
They've been reworked. We're waiting for the measurements from the contractor to confirm that the work is done properly, and we'll inspect to make sure, but we believe that the stair work is complete. It's just the handrail.
Okay. I looked at it myself.
I drove by there today, and there was a construction company there doing something over there by the stairs today.
Okay.
Also, while you're on it, excuse me, while you're on that subject, residents have been asking me for parking permits for that area.
So, the reason I want to, the reason I'm asking, John, is because I wanna, do we, do we have a date yet for these punchless items?
The remaining punchless item is installation of the handrail, and in, today, we communicated with Secoan to ask when their sub is ready to install it, and we don't have a date from them yet, but we expect that that work will be concluded this month, and we're waiting for a firm date for the handrail. It's been fabricated. It needs to be installed, and we'll hear back in the next couple of days.
Okay, all right. If you could just email the Board and myself as soon as you hear it, as I told you will. So, that would be useful. And then, John, Card, we'll try to get you that information so you can start calling back the people who have been calling you. Because once we know that, I think we'll be able to give you some information about the parking.
Okay, good.
I just have one thing. I have one thing. It's for Nancy.
Go ahead.
Nancy, just a follow-up on the email. Did, are we, are we looking on that pedestrian crosswalk for the hole in the ground there on West Main?
DOT has completed some test pits in Boring, and to characterize the rock there, we received information from them this week, and we need to convene another technical meeting. We had already had one technical meeting between KC and DOT with Geotech and Structural Engineers, and so far, the collective is in agreement that we're gonna work together to come up with a solution. We urge the DOT that we'd like to have an effective solution that's not overkill, and, and once we identify the solution, that we anticipate the Village will probably be turning to DOT to figure out how to achieve funding for the fix. In the meantime, the resident engineer is the one that's following up on how they're going to bridge the, the open area, and I've reached out to him. I will nudge him again. I have not heard back. There was talk of them perhaps using an aluminum walkway with handrails, like you saw during construction. Contact used one, but, but I don't think that that's in place yet, right?
No, not yet. Reason why I'm asking is I seen residents walking up the street, and they, they walk on the curb part of it.
Yeah, yeah, it's not good. So, I'll continue to push DOT, because you have an interim fix that you need resolved to maintain pedestrian access through your commercial corridor, and then the permanent fix wouldn't be resolved until 2021, according to DOT.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, before KC leaves, do you have more, John, for the report?
No, that was the end.
Okay, so, Corey, do you wanna talk to us about the nine-element plan and what's going on?
Yes, so, um, the three things that I sent John to put on, there are three demonstration projects that we've lined up for the nine-element plan and LWRP, and I've brought them to the DOS this week, which they approved on, just pending some DEC approval, but the three projects are, one is Twin Island Biochar project. Twin Island is a pond up at the headwater of Wappinger Creek, and the project there is gonna include installing biochar as well as a weir at the drainage point of the pond, and the weir is supposed to help catch a lot of debris, as well as hopefully fix water level of the pond, help it rise. And the biochar will be there. It's something we've brought up a few times at this board meeting. But the biochar is this natural filter, and we're putting it in there and another spot to, over 30 days, to see how well it filters out the water, and hopefully, we can install that in, in more areas if it's successful. The Green Pond project is very similar. There's no weir, but it's also a biochar project. Green Pond is literally a very green pond next to Duchess Airport. It's at the bottom, or the, it's, it collects a lot of runoff from not only a construction property, but also there's a neighborhood complex there with a lot of private septic, so the water gets, gets a lot of bad stuff in it. There's a dam at the bottom of it, and we wanna install biochar there for the same reasons, test it over 30 days and see if it filters out the water. And the third project is this Streamgo filtration project up at Woodhill. It's this giant crate. Again, I think I brought up a little last week. It's this giant crate that these people from Canada have made, essentially their own water filtration system, and you can retrofit it onto active and outdated filtration systems, and it does its own thing. It can clean water. It has all this behind it. It has this, they call it a membrane. It's really just, it's like a filter. It's very, very fine, and they also have this big tub where they have these little microscopic bugs in there eating phosphorus, and it said it's the one thing where at the end, they say, you know, if it goes through the whole process, you can drink it right then, which, you know, they pour you the cup, but no one, I have not seen anyone drink it yet. But, so those are the demonstration projects we plan on doing through the LWRP, and hopefully, if they're successful, which we assume they will be, then we can encourage and try and implement that creek-wide and maybe start actually cleaning the water.
Yeah, so there's one more that I'm gonna add to that, that we've only recently started talking about, and that's to take sediment from the beds of Wappinger Lake and to treat that sediment, that watery sediment with biochar, and to test that sediment afterwards to see if it would be okay to use for residential non-food landscaping purposes or commercial landscaping purposes. And what this would allow us to do would be to try to dredge the lake and use the dredged spoils in other locations so that we could dispose of it without sending it to a, sending it far away as a contaminated source.
That's it for the nine element.
Did you, did, did I, did you get all of that, or am I going?
No, I think we got it.
Corey provided me with three items that he wanted the Board to take action on tonight.
Well, I don't think we have enough information to take action tonight.
Yeah, I was actually, John, I meant to say that I, after having a conversation with Matt later today, I think we're gonna hold off on them. They were the three projects I just discussed, but I think we were gonna, we're gonna hold off for another.
Yeah, each of the three projects needs approval from either DEC or the Department of Health. So, you can't, yeah, just biochar water without, without their approval, because they are DEC, state-regulated.
Yeah, so there's actually four projects, so.
Right.
So, since we're looking ahead, let's make it four at the next time. We can get those on the agenda. Okay.
So, are we gonna, I'm sorry, are we gonna table these items? Is that it?
We're gonna table the contracts themselves.
Okay, just for clarity, I'm looking at a Duchess County Department of Health application for wastewater disposal system for Woodhill Green Pilot.
That's, yeah, that's the pilot plant that Corey was talking about. It's a, it's a package. So, we're gonna, our plant, it'll treat sewage, but the Department of Health has to approve that pilot study as it affects an existing wastewater treatment plant.
So, we're not taking any action on that application tonight?
We need, so we need the Department of Health to do something before we.
Yeah, no, none of the three, John. That was my mistake. I, I did send that to you yesterday, but after the rest of yesterday and today, I, I should've told you to table.
All right, Corey, you and I can get together tomorrow morning, so I have accurate minutes.
Sure, sure.
Thanks. If that's it for those projects, the next is a resolution for Ormator Development. Matt, did you want me to read that?
Yeah.
Resolution number 432020 of 2020, resolution authorizing release of security posted in connection with Starbucks 1557 Route Nine Patriots Park Lot. The following resolution was introduced by, and we'll get to that, whereas by Resolution Number 42 of 2020, the Village Board previously accepted a performance bond secured by cash deposit dated February 25, 2020, executed by Stephen Tinkelman as President of Ormator Development Corporation in the sum of $16,500 to secure the obligations of the developer pursuant to the terms and conditions of the resolution of amended site plan approval to Patriots Park Building F alterations. And whereas the developer has completed all the improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the resolution of amended site plan approval to Patriots Park Building F alterations to be satisfaction of the Village engineer, now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board does hereby acknowledge that the developer has completed all required improvements in accordance with the resolution of amended site plan approval to Patriots Park Building F alterations, and hereby authorizes the release of the security posted in the amount of $16,500 to Ormator Development Corporation. And I have a motion to approve.
So, do we have, who is, who is saying that this is ready? Is it the Planning Board or the?
No, Brian, Brian has to.
Yeah. It's Brian Murphy. Christian Moore from KC Engineering was out there a while ago. I have an email verifying that he is satisfied, and also the Planning Board Chairman, Tom Morris, walked the site, and we have confirmation that it's all completed.
Okay, very good. That's what I wanted to hear. So.
So, Brian, you're gonna issue a final certificate of occupancy?
We have.
Okay, then, then I know that you had issued a temporary CO.
We did. We initially issued a temporary CO because they posted the bond, and then after Christian Moore and Tom Morris walked the site, two to three weeks ago, we had issued a a full certificate of occupancy.
Okay, then, then by, by that very act, we have to release the bond, and I recommend that the Board adopt this resolution.
Okay, so could we get a motion?
I'll make it.
In a second?
A second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay.
Can I just do a roll call vote quick?
Yeah, so trustee Huber?
Aye.
Trustee Marco John?
Aye.
Trustee Panessa?
Aye.
Trustee Nesnick?
Aye.
Trustee Lamars?
Aye.
Trustee Catalano?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, the last item on the printed agenda is, in previous business, property maintenance updates list three properties, 25 South at Remsen, 8 Tribuco, and 10 North.
Okay, Brian.
25 South Remsen, I have no further update on, maybe Commissioner Burke does, but 8 Tribuco, I have been in contact with the owner, and they are starting very slowly to take care of it. I do have a bid from a contractor to go on there, but trying to give the owner a little bit more time to take care of the issues. 10 Nord Street, I would request that we, I believe it's a public hearing, and if it is, I would request that we adjourn it to the next meeting. We are going to be issuing order to remedy violation notices using the New York State Property Maintenance Code and not Chapter 114, the Village Property Maintenance Code.
Okay, so I just, I just asked if, I think it's appropriate that we go into executive session for any discussion on 25 South Remsen? Okay, so.
Matt, Matt, before you do that, is it possible for the Village Board to consider KC's proposal dated November 13th about Route Nine Sewer?
Okay, I was trying to figure out who that was. So, this is Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I think so, yes. So, we're not ready to go into executive yet. So, is there anything else on the agenda?
No, that's it, Mayor.
So, why don't, Nancy, why don't you talk to us about Route Nine?
Okay, the Route Nine Sewer proposal, I actually drafted it for John's signature. He's the one sitting with you now, but I wrote it, as John said. For Contract Four, this work was included, but as many of you know, it was canceled because of an environmental issue discovered at Arrow Auto Glass that needed to be resolved before the construction could happen. Since that time, Arrow Auto Glass has resolved their environmental issue. There were some unknown petroleum tanks, and there was some soil that was tainted with petroleum. That's been cleaned up by the owner. That's good, and with that done, the Village has expressed a desire to install the Route Nine Sewer improvements as part of Contract Five. The, the work will be night work per DOT in that corridor and, and through the easements at Duchess Plaza. That owner in negotiation about the easement also requested night work so that their easement is not impacted. The proposal from KC is a minimal amount of engineering for presenting the design to DOT for highway work on it and negotiating a works zone traffic control plan, and, and then there's, there's time in there for observing the construction as it's, as it's done during the night for Contract Five in 2021. So, the proposal, on the last page of it, we are, we said KC Engineering proposes timing materials billing up to $2,000 for the minimal engineering design approval from the Energy Department of Health and DOT, and efforts needed to, for construction support for the Route Nine Sewer portion of the Contract Five improvements. The anticipated public construction, about $300,000. It include, it includes taking a line of sewer that's a problem in front of Duchess Plaza out of service, removing manholes and capping pipe and filling pipe with lava oil.
Okay, so this is, I, I think that this is a very important project because it will help the Village avoid an underneath Route Nine sewer issue. And so, for that reason, I would like to encourage the Board to finish this project that we started a couple of years ago.
Mayor, I gotta keep the things, Matt. That's Kevin. It is a, we should, we needed, last Monday, not this, not this past Monday, but last week, Monday night, the Highway Department got called in for the sewer on, was backing up, and it was a big grease. If this project was done. So if, if this project was done when Arginio did it, we would never had this issue. It's, it's got my, my approval, my bill on it. And I just want to let KC know that there is a, there's, there's pieces left over from this project from Arginio when it came. There's a manhole down at the village's holding station down here. I'll call it, so if it gets a bid, you can tell them there's pieces down there that go, that belong to that project. So they can probably not charge for the product if charges were put in.
We'll, we'll look at that for sure.
Okay.
Okay, well, if that's the case, Kevin, would you make a motion?
I'll make a motion for the contract number five sewer project.
Okay, and could I get a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I think that's the end of our published portion.
Mayor.
Is there anything that the board wants to bring up?
A mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, I thought we were going to vote on the officer candidate tonight, the personnel. I'm going to pick him on Monday and we're going to vote on him tonight.
Very good, thank you. So is somebody from the board ready to talk to us about that?
Since it's labor, involves labor, you can go in the executive session to discuss it and then come out of executive session if there's board action.
Okay, you guys good with that? Could I? Is there anything else that the board wants to bring up in public session? If there's nothing from the board, if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak? I'm just giving a little extra time in case you're on YouTube and the, just to remind everybody the way to do this is to go on to the village's face, excuse me, webpage, wappingersfallsny.gov. Look at the Zoom link that is posted there. And if you go on that Zoom link, you can make a public comment. So I'll just give a little bit more time. Okay, so that being said, I know that we have at least one personnel item, one matter of potential litigation, a collective bargaining agreement matter for the contract. Is there anything else, Craig, or board?
Again, so for those. Well, we'll also be discussing some other, some, some litigation from the, the, the agenda as well that we had had touched upon in the meeting.
All right, for those items, could I get a motion, all, all of those items? Could I get a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make it.
Second? It was Brian, trustee Lammers.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Trustee Penessa with the second.
So we're going to go into executive?
The board has entered executive session. Please stand by. The meeting will resume when they return.
Are you back in the meeting?
I'm in the meeting. It's recording, so.
Okay, okay, so we're ready for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Lam and Barnoski to negotiate with CSA on behalf of the village regarding the MOA amendment to the existing CBA and to negotiate and draft any necessary agreements with the existing retirees for reimbursement of benefits.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Nesnick? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, are there any other motions or discussions? If there's no other motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Second? Seconded by trustee Nesnick? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you. Goodbye.